And the tickets are not being issued now until the signs go up.
Correct.
Signs are going up soon?
Yes, we had some difficulty with the vendor. We kind of committed after the council meeting that we would make sure we did an education portion.
Right.
It isn't just writing violations, it's a multi-pronged approach. We identified a problem. We had a problem with distracted drivers causing accidents. We took action on that problem. We took the multi-pronged approach of educating the public. Whether we like it or not, these discussions are educational for the public as people now have become aware that we have this issue. We also have been stopping people and warning them and giving them handouts regarding the ordinance, what it is, discussing it with them. We've been doing things in the press and we were, we committed to putting signs up at key entryways to the city to advise people that until all those portions were in place, we decided not to do the enforcement portion because we didn't want to be disingenuous.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman Horlach?
Yes, Chief. Somebody mentioned, I think, 100, I guess, warnings of some sort. That was in a pa, I'm not sure what was in the paper, to be honest with you. I haven't, haven't caught up on all of my, my reading. And so perhaps that might ring a bell. I think the issue was, was that there's a certain number of warning, a rate of warnings or perhaps public education that's being done now that results in an unofficial or an official warning. And the issue really, I think, speaks to, do we believe that this is going to be the level of tickets that we're going to be issuing in the future?
If the question is, will the tickets equate or will the warnings actually be the same number that's tickets? I can't answer that. That's, we have individual officer discretion. We give a lot of warnings to people when there's other violations that occur. So if we warn someone and say, you're speeding and I notice you're on the phone, they get a warning on the phone and they get the speeding violation. So whether or not that'll change when we have the distracted driving ordinance fully implemented to where we're writing violations, it'd be speculative, my part. I can't say, yes, we're going to write that violation or not. It's up to the individual officer discretion.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. Any others? Seth?
And I also wanted to point out that it is referenced on the website, the front page, and there's question and answers. I think it goes over a lot of the things that we've heard come up at council meetings and it's very readily available. So if citizens have additional questions, they should definitely reference that.
Thank you. Any other?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Beldtman.
I'd like the attorney, if I could, to clarify. There was, there were statements that a separate library board created under this PA 164 millage would be appointed. Some said it would be elected. Some said it had no transparency. You addressed that in your memo and I'd like you to clarify that while we're all here together, please.
Mrs. Paul?
Yes, I did attempt to answer some of the questions to the best of my ability. There are some I just cannot answer because they're citizen-initiated proposals and the information has been provided as to how to contact some of those individuals, at least. The initial library board, should one of the four proposals pass, would be appointed. It's a provisional board and it will be appointed only until there can be an election. From that point forward, it would be an elected board. And in addition, that board would be subject to the Open Meetings Act, Freedom of Information Act, and the Sunshine Laws as a whole. So that would guarantee some transparency. The board does not collect taxes. That is correct. It can only collect what is given to them up to the amount that's approved by the voters.
Follow-up, please. And whatever that millage rate wa, is, .9885 in Proposal One, much like the school district, that goes directly to that board. This city council has no authority over that money, do we?
That is correct. It would be just as it is, just as we collect for the other entities, the school boards, the counties.
Thank you.
Any other response or clarification? Councilwoman Kirwin?
There, I think I'll go to the city manager, Madam Mayor, if I may. There was some talk or suggestion from, from one of the speakers tonight that council or, or the city would be bartering over chairs and tables and books and who knows how this would happen. I know that's not the intention of this council nor management. I'm wondering if you would speak to some of the ongoing discussion you've had with the Friends of the Troy Public Library and the State of the Library?
My discussions with the Friends of the Library has been quite limited. And we didn't talk about any specific, with any specificity, what we're going to charge, say, for the, the building and contents. And those conversations would take place if the millage proposal one passed. What we would do is, we being the attorney and myself, and I would bring in John and Mark to actually sit down with the Friends of the Library or whomever they designated to work out the cost distributions for the current contents that are there as well as the value of the building. And it would be up to city council. When I was an assistant manager here, I negotiated with Oakland County the adaptive reuse of the community center as the 524 District Court. And essentially, it was primarily a maintenance agreement and renovation agreement. Whatever the cost was for renovation and what we decided to be maintenance, which was pretty much in line with our maintenance costs, is what we would charge the court. So again, we would get direction first from city council. You know, the questions of, do you want to give the books to the, to the Friends for $1? Do you want to give the building to the Friends for $1? If you say that's the way we want to go, that's the way we'll go. We would then just negotiate a rental agreement for building and grounds, maintenance from that point forward with costs commensurate to what we would charge ourselves.
And that's the precedent that has been in the past and that's certainly misunderstood. And I, I think that the intention of, I can't speak for council, but it's understood. When we saw the results of the February vote, we understood what no meant no and we have operated under that. That's why we developed the one-year budget and the three-year budget with that in mind. The same way with this election, the will of the voters will still speak. And I think we well understand the will of the voters and the idea isn't to parse over individual things, but if the will of the voters is to have an independent body run that library, we certainly would understand that. So, so thank you for that.
In addition to that, there's, there's precedents been set by other communities which have a separate, independent library, many of which have been enumerated to us, the names of the cities. And so there is information on how those were formed and what the, the use of those materials in the building would be. So there are things that we could judge that on. Are there any others? Councilwoman Kirwin?
Is it okay? And I just wanted to point out one more thing and, and comments, I'll bring this up again, but it's, there have been many communities who faced the same issues that we're facing. And overwhelmingly, the communities have been supporting their libraries, whether they're to build, to expand, or to renew. Over and over, time after time, this community, for the zoo itself, three-quarters of the people who voted in that election, it was a primary, 75% in every single precinct throughout Troy voted to support the zoo. I don't know if 75% of our residents go to the zoo on a yearly basis. I do know that very, very many people use and need our Troy Public Library.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Horlach?
Yes. Now, if somebody from the administration could, could just verify this, but what happens or what happens if Proposal Two is the only one that passes? Or the, I shouldn't say Proposal Two, the one, the first unnumbered one after Proposal One would be a technical way of saying it.
Mrs. Paul? Mr. Zerly?
Are you referring to the one that has the three years and the 10 years?
I can't remember the numbers. All I know is there's Proposal One and there's one immediately underneath it. I guess my, my question is, if one of the other three passes and that's the only one that passes, what happens?
It would be the same for all four proposals. If any four of the proposals pass, what I've represented in my memorandum as to what would happen would be the same.
I just wanted to clarify that because it has been insinuated that Proposal One is the only one to allow for an independent library district to be established. The other thing is if, if none of them pass and this petition is placed on a ballot and passed, or even if council decides to amend its three-year budget and continue to operate a city library through the city of Troy directly, is it also possible that through a, I believe it would be a charter amendment on a subsequent ballot, you could actually increase the city's mill levy, similar to what we did in February, but say, for example, a number less than 1.9? That could happen, is that correct?
Mrs. Paul?
Again, there are a lot of hypotheticals that you've given to us and I think they'd each have to be addressed one at a time. As I understand the, the proposal for the ordinance amendment, it's an ordinance amendment proposal. I have not seen it, so I, I don't know exactly what it says, but assuming that that is appropriate for the voters to decide on, again, assuming that it is legislative instead of administrative, then, you know, you have to get over that hurdle first. And then if, in fact, it is a legislative proposal and not an administrative proposal, you could have a charter amendment and a subsequent election. Yes, that, that is correct. As far as whether or not it could be dedicated to the library, yes. I mean, you, you could have that happen at some point in time in the future. But I don't, and the timing of that would be on a future election.
And so my question for the city manager is, is it, is it possible that, that we could still have a city-owned library without having to cut other areas of the city if we had a mill levy greater than what we have now?
Mr. Zerly?
That would depend on the kind of library you wanted, but I just want to make sure that I'm answering your, your question. In other words, we have a millage rate, 9.25 mils, and that's embodied, embedded in our, our three-year budget without an increase. If the council, through voter approval, decided to advance a .75 mil increase for a library specifically to bring us up to a total of 10 mils, could there be a library on .75 mils? Is that, is that your question essentially?
That, that would be an example of a possibility, yes.
If the, if there was a .75 millage increase for a library, that would equate to a certain number of dollars that would come into the city in a dedicated fashion and we would do what we could to, to offer that service, given that, that revenue.
Another item that was brought up and, and perhaps the, we could address this by posting a link on our website is, is the, the $9.4 million for the transit center. If we could simply have a breakdown of where that, simply put, that way everybody is on the same page, talking about the same thing and they can see where the 9.4 comes from. Can we just show that perhaps as a convenient link?
Of course we can. And I think that without putting Mr. Miller on the spot, Mark, don't answer, obviously if you don't know the answer, but do you know the breakdown of the 9.4 million dollars? I mean, how much is federal funding that has to be earmarked for the transit center? What the local match for Troy was and what the local match for Birmingham was?
All of those funds are dedicated to the transit center only from federal or state funds.
Right. But in terms of the source of the funds?
FTA, FRA, and the state of Michigan.
But of the, the 9.4 million, is 90% of that federal money?
That 9.4, we'll double-check the exact breakdown.
Okay. But it's roughly 90%?
Yes, I think that might be all of it.
Okay.
And, and just so that this doesn't keep going back and forth, let's make sure that we, we grab essentially every dollar that's been spent because we started working on this a couple of years ago. And we would want to include the cost for the, you know, the joint meetings with the Birmingham Planning Commission as well as attorneys and lobbyists and architects and so on and so forth. That way, everybody's talking about the same thing and there won't be any, there won't be any confusion. That's really my intent. Another item that I noted was that somebody mentioned that the, the three proposals should not have been placed on the ballot. It's my understanding to the city attorney that your memo N6 addresses the issue and that perhaps one way of preventing this from happening, and I'm, and this is just my, my question, is if the state had a statute that had a higher threshold, it would, the probability of, of having four petitions would be reduced, say, for example, 2,000 signatures. So my first question is, did we have a choice about placing the other three on the ballot? And the second is, if the threshold is greater, do you believe that it would make it harder to place additional items on the ballot?
Mrs. Paul?
I'll, I'll address the second question first. Did we have a choice in placing those four ballot proposals on the ballot? No, they were referred to the county because we verified that the signatures were valid and that, it met all of the statutory requirements and was submitted to the county who placed that item on our ballot. So, no, we did not have a choice. We similarly could not modify the language. I mentioned in my memo that there is one proposal that uses both three years and 10 years. That remains on the ballot as it was submitted and potentially it could be fatal to that proposal, but that is exactly as it was submitted and was required to be placed on the ballot in that fashion. As far as whether or not the statute should be amended, I can't, I can't give you an answer to that. Certainly, there is not a large number of sign, there are not a large number of signatures required under this 1877 law.
Councilwoman Sider, did you ask for the floor?
No, I...
Well, someone signaled that you did, so...
I was gonna, I was gonna wait my turn again.
Okay. Well, Councilman Horlach had several in a row and so I was letting him finish in there. I believe Mayor Protem Fleming was next then.
Thank you. I've been rather quiet. But back on the library issue, I just want to go back in, in time for a minute and just to make sure that I'm still clear. We approached the state librarian, we being the city, the state librarian, some months ago when this issue came up. Because I think everyone in this council would like to have a library. That's not the issue. It's about how we do it. Can we do it? How do we fund it? But we approached the state librarian specifically and asked if we could reduce the number of hours that the library is required to stay open under state guidelines. And it's my recollection that the state librarian put it back in our court saying, give me a budget, give me a number of hours that you're proposing and I will consider it. We talked about 55 hours, whatever, and that's some state guidelines. But it's still my understanding, the state librarian is still awaiting this council at some point to come back with a proposal, a proposed budget and proposed number of hours that we would recommend. And it, it doesn't have to be a $4 million a year library, it could be something less. How we get there, I don't know. But is that still an open issue with the state librarian?
My understanding, if I may, Your Honor?
Yes.
Thank you. My understanding of Mayor Protem Fleming is that your recollection is correct. The state librarian indicated that she would not give an opinion on if come solutions, but if we went there and says, we have X number of dollars now to allocate for a library that will yield X number of hours, would you allow us to still operate and be part of their conglomerate? At that point, she would make a decision. That was my understanding.
Mrs. Paul?
Mayor, if I may just add to that though as well, in addition to the number of hours, there are a number of other factors that are considered as to whether or not you will receive funding for a library. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that it's not just hours alone, that there are a number of other factors. And I'm sure that Ms. Russ has better grasp on that than I do.
Anyone else?
I wish I had any to see Kathy there.
Mayor?
Yes?
I didn't realize that, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that Kathy was here. Did you want a further explanation or are we only talking about the hours, Mr. Fleming?
Well, if she'd like to give a further explanation, I would, I'd just like, I don't remember the hours, but there are probably some other ramifications as well. I know that Kathy, thank you for, for being here, by the way, and for all the time you put into this. I know it's been stressful.
You're very welcome.
We would all like to have a budget to keep the library open. It's how do we go about that? But could you give a more specifics as to response you received from the state librarian relative to what she's looking for from this city at this point?
Well, the state librarian, the way, the way the state aid works is think of your taxes. The year goes by and then you file your tax report. The state aid report works the same way. The year goes by, you file your state aid report, the state librarian approves it, you receive your money. The way that she operates is that she will not grant a waiver in advance. So in other words, if I went to her, if you went to her and said, could you please allow the Troy Public Library to operate 55 hours a, a week next year, she, chances are, will say no. She's had several other petitions. She has responded in the negative to all of them. What she tells everyone is, do what you need to do and then apply for a waiver. That has caused a lot of consternation in the library community because many libraries are in a troubled economic situation, but that is how she currently operates. At this point, I haven't pursued it with her with that understanding and I recollect, and perhaps Mr. Zerly can help me out, we had a conversation probably about four months ago, Councilman, and, and I remember we had talked about it. I had not pursued it with the state librarian since that conversation because, if you'll forgive the analogy, what I said was the, the, the money is the horse and the waiver is the cart. So we, even if we got a waiver to have the library open for five hours a week, if there's no money to keep the library open for five hours a week, the waiver doesn't matter. The, the waiver is a moot point. So, so that is the situation with the state librarian, how she is operating. I, I hope that answers your question, but if not, please let me know and I'll try to clarify.
Mr. Zerly?
That's my recollection as well. First, we had to come up with a budget that was accurate and then apply for a waiver.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman, Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yeah, I don't want to, to monopolize the thing, but I've been relatively quiet tonight. But are you aware, again, has a state librarian given any city a waiver today?
Not to reduce the number of operating hours.
Anyone else, Council, and then we're going to take a break. Anyone else have a response, something they want to say in response to public comment or ask for clarification? Councilwoman Sider, did you?
Well, I think we've kind of what-ifted this thing to death. I, I think we beat this up into what-ifs and we shouldn't what-if. I think we know what, what's going to happen. We have a budget and I'll reserve my comments for, for later.
Thank you. Council, if there are none others, we'll, we'll take a 10-minute break, come back to regular business. business. In session, audience, I remind you that after our regular meeting, we have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, so we do need to move along. Our next item for business is regular business, and our first item under regular business is our winter maintenance agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County, Road Commission. And we have an item before us that we should have on the table before we speak to it and amend it or whatever. Councilman Kerwin?
With all the Troy City Councilor by approves, the 2010-2011 Winter Maintenance Agreement between the Road Commission for Oakland County, RCOC, and the City of Troy for snow and ice control of nine segments of Priority One and Priority Two county roads, which are described and outlined in Exhibit A. Be it further resolved, that Troy City Councilor by authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents, a copy of this agreement, which is authorized by the provisions of 1951 PA 51 MCL 247.651 et cetera, shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Do we have a second to get it on the table? Support. Move by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion of the item. Council, I call your attention to the yellow paper on the table where myself and Councilwoman McGinnis asked some questions with regard to this item, because I was kind of surprised that it was on the agenda as an agreement for the contract, because I remembered that the council indicating that for county roads, we wanted the county to take over that maintenance, being that, over the history of Troy plowing them and then the county reimbursing us for some of the money, there was still usually a sizable amount that they did not reimburse us for. So, I note that in the answers from Mr. Lamorato, that City Council has removed the county road winter maintenance from the 2011-12 and 2012-13 budget by adopting the three-year budget process. I was hopeful that we would not approve this winter maintenance agreement tonight and also remove it from this budget. I'm very concerned that we continue to subsidize other levels of government that should, if they need that money to do the roads properly, then they need to ask for the funds to do that and not expect us to continue to do it. I see that there's some wiggle room in this agreement of things that we could do with roads that we want to have at a certain priority level, if you still want to have a contact with them, and so I await hearing what other council members feel about this matter. Councilwoman Beltrameany?
Madam Mayor, I do tend to agree with your comments that we are not in the business of subsidizing others. I guess I am more concerned with the other $173,000 that's budgeted, and it would be my recommendation that if we have a horrible winter, at the very least, after we have expended the funds that we expect to be reimbursed, we revert to RCOC standards for the rest of the winter. And I know that will still be on our nickel, but it will also show people what we will be getting next year and the years following. And there's no reason for us to continue to spend Cadillac funds that we don't really have.
Further discussion of the item?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Kerwin?
I know that we have budgeted for this year. I guess my concern, it was the same concern that I mentioned when we were doing our budgeting process, is that on all of these steps that we're taking to stay in compliance with our limited funds, we also come face-to-face with our desire to attract and retain businesses. And I see that these roads are along the corridors where we would say to business, "Hey, come to Troy," and then, "Oh, look at this road," and you may have trouble getting through. I think that's, again, when I read through the visions, which was our reading assignment, reassignment for this week, that at many times, what our budget says, which is our major policy piece, and what our vision says are two different things. I am inclined, after seeing the responses and reviewing these, to vote in, to support this resolution as written. I recognize that, and what we heard when we were at a budget session, that Oakland County now recognizes as the only road in Troy, I-75, and their standards are revisited in here again, which is always a surprise to think, "That's the only road in Troy? What about the rest of the county roads?" But I am concerned, at the same time that we're trying to reach out and attract, that something like this, snow-filled streets, will make it difficult for us to sell Troy. And we know that that's absolutely essential for us to thrive as a community and support the many other offerings that we want to have here. So, I will be supporting yes and voting yes tonight.
Further comments?
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
I also remember discussing this at the budget session, and when I saw this, I was surprised also. And my comment is that Troy has always been above the other communities. If I heard it once, I heard it 1,000 times. When you cross Dequender, the roads change. When you go into other communities, the road changes. When you go north, they all change. We always were above everybody else. While we cannot be above everybody else anymore. So, I am not going to vote for this because I think we need to send a message. The counties should take care of their roads, and at this point, we cannot be above everybody else right now. So, that's my comment.
Further comments?
Mayor?
Councilman Horlak?
Well, I do have a question for staff, because what I would like to know is, we're operating under, we need to be careful, we're operating under the presumption that revenues and expenses, expenditures will disappear if we vote no. Obviously, I would presume, I think it's safe to say that revenues will disappear. But the question that I have is, how much of the expenditures will actually remain? How much of that is internal service funds, equipment and overhead and so on and so forth, and how much is actually a variable cost that we can expunge?
Mr. Zerly?
I can respond in a general sense, if that's okay. If it's not, then I'll try to get more specific with John and Mark's help. And first, I'd like to mention that although I was on vacation this week, I authorized this item to be on the agenda. Before I left, I put it on, and it's on because I said it was okay to put this on the agenda. The city council, and I'm going to give a longer answer, Mr. Horlak, because I want to embody all the comments, if I may. The city council speaks through its resolutions, and the council adopted a three-year budget. And there was enough funding in this year's budget, as Mrs. Beltrameany pointed out, to a certain level, to have a higher level of standard to maintain county roads in terms of plowing snow. We do have the best standard in the area, pardon my voice. After a four-inch snowfall for all of our 300 miles of streets, whether it's a county major, a city major, or a local road in neighborhoods, after the snow falls and there's four inches or more, the streets are clean within 24 hours. The reduced budget that we have for reducing our level of service next year was never really about an outcome of reducing our snow plowing on county major roads. The outcome was, we could not do it because we lay off 10 people in the Streets Department. And when we had to reduce our workforce in fiscal year 1112, which I think is a reduction of another 54 full-time people, excuse my voice, we no longer had the manpower to meet the protocol of a 24-hour snow removal, not only for the county roads essentially, but for all of our roads. In fact, the budget message indicates that with the reduction of personnel, we can no longer plow these roads, and we'll have to work on a protocol for the balance of roads that are city roads. So, there's not really any associated savings per se, with the exception of what we budgeted for the overage on county roads. The savings would come in next year upon layoff of 10 people in the Streets Department, when we cannot plow streets. The recommendation before you is to plow county roads this year. I personally think it's important that we do so and maintain the 10 people that we currently have on staff and not lay them off.
Further comments on this item? Mr. Lamorato?
Mayor and City Council, as part of Councilman Horlak's question also, was the cost, it pretty much is all a variable cost, whatever. There's only charges to that. It's for any equipment charge, salt usage is strictly charged only as used for the county roads. So, there would not be, there'd be virtually no expenditures if we were not to perform any county road winter maintenance.
If it is councils wish to have a contract for winter maintenance of the county roads with us plowing them rather than the county doing them at the reduced level, I think that we should at least consider what Councilwoman Beltrameany has suggested, and that is that we plow them at the level up until the expenditure of the funds that were being reimbursed for, and then reduce the service. Would we need an amendment in the resolution and in the contract to achieve that? I believe we would. Mr. Zerly?
I don't think we would. We would have the responsibility to maintain the county roads, and we would follow the protocol that we established. I think whatever we do, not to be insulting to the Road Commission, would be better than what the county would do. And we should take a holistic approach, in my view, not just the 30 or 40-some miles of county major roads, but all of our 300 miles of streets, to see what kind of winter we have, because we have a budget for our city roads as well, and we can calibrate it throughout the winter to see if we need to modify our protocols for all the roads. But specifically, we can approve this contract and not worry about going to a lower level of service if we have a tough winter.
For this year, that was not the suggestion that was made by Councilwoman Beltrameany?
I'm sorry, I thought I was answering your question, if we have to modify the contract, if...
Yes, we would have to modify the contract.
I don't think we do. We just have to agree to modify, to maintain their streets, and as long as we hold at least their standard...
Oh, all right. Yes, Mrs. Bloom?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I am looking at the contract, and it requires only that we perform in accordance with the Oakland County standards.
All right, that's better. The other thing is, I have a concern about the employees that we use to do our plowing. And if we have what's predicted for this winter, which is a lot of snow, we're going to need all of our employees just to plow our city roads, the ones, the main roads that are city roads, plus our local roads. So, we're definitely going to need them. My concern with all of this, and the reason I brought it up, I think this is the second or third year I've said it, is that I believe that we should be reimbursed by the Oakland County Road Commission for the funds that we have to expend if they want us to maintain the roads at the level that we have. If they don't want us to, then when people are calling and complaining about the roads, the calls are going to be referred to the county road commission for their roads, because there is no reason why we should have to continually take the heat for somebody else's I'm all for safety, and I like the roads plowed and everything like that, but you know, when there's only so much money, there's only so much that you can do. So, with your answer that we could do it to the level with the Oakland County standard and not the higher standard, which we do our roads, then that's a different matter. Councilwoman Beltrameany, are you satisfied with that?
I am. I'm wondering, and that will come later, how we can track that to kind of know how we're doing.
Mr. Zerly?
Mr. Miller and Richnack will be more than happy to supply a monthly update once the snowflakes start to accumulate down our streets, how we're doing in terms of what we've allocated for our budget.
Cool, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. General...
Councilman Kerwin?
Just a general comment, Madam Mayor, we heard from one of our county, one of our four county commissioners tonight, and also from some speakers in praise again of the county and how they passed a three-year budget, and gee, isn't that great, that they can balance and do all of those things. We're reminded again of the "just say no." They balance because they just say no. And this is another case. At one time, all of the county roads were considered county roads. Now, we have I-75. So, yes, they balance the same way as the state finishes their budget. However, many of the services that used to be covered by that have been picked up by local municipalities, and we can't bear it anymore. We cannot bear that burden any longer.
Well, the other thing, in the latest Road Commission newsletter that came out, they're talking about less state funding coming to them, which means a reduced level of service from them. But that doesn't mean that our money for our roads, the ones that we really do need and are responsible for taking care of, should have to suffer because we have the, you know, with the contract with the others. So, I know it's a hard answer, but that's a truthful answer.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Horlak?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, the Road Commission is independent of the county.
Yeah.
So, I think we need to make sure that we're not, we're talking about apples and apples. The thing I would like to see happen is, if we can modify our budget so that we actually limit our expenditures to that which will be revenue, and then I would be happier. I do think that we need to, if our intent is to limit what we spend or to put forward an effort that comes pretty close to the revenues we'll get from the county, I think we should probably put that in a resolution, not this resolution.
All right. I think if I understand your statement, Mr. Horlak, that means we're essentially rolling the bones, and that if we have a tough winter, there'll be a point where we don't plow the major streets.
No, what I'm saying is that we can either have the county do it, or if we do it, we're going to have to make sure that we're not losing money on it, because you have budgeted a $173,000 expenditure or greater than revenue by $173,000, according to this memo, and I'm not happy with that. And I think the issue has been, how can we transition from last year to next year? Because next year, we are expecting to have the county do it. Because next year, we are expecting to have the county do it. And one is a service issue, and the other is really a cost issue.
I think we could transition by having a monthly update continuously, and staying within that $173,000 threshold, which we think is the top end of our subsidy to the county. But do it again for all 300 miles of streets.
Right.
That doesn't really accomplish what I'd like to see happen, and that's perhaps where we differ.
Okay. Well, we'll do whatever the governing body decides to tell us to do, so.
Further discussion on this item? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Reluctantly, yes.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we're on to the Consulting Professional Services Agreement with the International City Management Association, ICMA, and if we could have the resolution on the table before the discussion.
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
Um...
Oh, go ahead.
I will move the resolution as printed to get it on the table.
Do we have a support?
Support.
A move by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed, discussion, and we'll have discussion on the item. First of all, Mr. Zerling, would you please clarify for members of the audience who were under public comment, talking about this item, and holding up the newspapers, et cetera, that they don't seem to be clear on why we would ask an outside, independent group with superb credentials to look at our efficiencies, to tell us, are we doing what we were asked to do by the residents, and what, by budget constraints, and are there areas where we can do it better or different?
It's a good question. Number one, this is a council-driven request, which personally I thought was one that was ever, even with our initial studies of some of the departments that we had, which were essentially on-demand services, which, in my view, makes it simple to analyze, we did use an outside consultant, and as a result, we were able to save money in the Engineering Department, restructure it, restructure the Building Department, restructure the Code Enforcement Department, restructure the management of the golf course, as well as restructure the Planning Department. And we used a consultant, Dick Carlisle, to help us out. But his purview of competence, if you will, is gone at this point, in terms of the departments that are left. And using myself as an example, I've managed three cities in two states, and so I have a perspective, based on my experience and education, on what best practices are. Troy is the best-run city that I've managed. However, having said that, if we go to the International City Management Association, where I've had experience in three cities, they have 9,000 clients that are municipal around the world, and they've assembled a team that can take a look at what we're doing to make sure that we follow best practices, to make sure that we're economically sustainable, and to also give an independent review, where staff, including myself, may be biased in making a recommendation, they have an independent review to take a look strictly at the process and how we're doing. And we believe that by using ICMA, even though it's going to cost a couple hundred thousand dollars, that if we follow the recommendations, the upfront one-time costs will be more than paid back if the recommendations are followed in terms of savings to the organization.
Further comments, questions? Councilwoman Kerwin?
Even in reviewing the Police Department, to do it internally, would we have that data, the data to results that ICMA works with Wayne State and other places, would you have that available here internally, in a review of some of your departments?
No, I would not.
And I think today, it really is incumbent upon all governmental units to look at the data. Show us the numbers, and let's see how this plays out, because that is the bottom line. So, if we can be more efficient, if we can be more streamlined, coming into having this done throughout every department, and do it well in advance of when we sit down again to look at the budget, and really examine where we are and where we need to go, this is the time.
I agree, and another point I did not mention is one of expediency. It took over a year for us to analyze four or five departments. The balance of the organization will be analyzed within 120 days.
Councilwoman Beltramini, I think you asked for the floor next.
Madam Mayor, if the goal of this consulting agreement is to gain additional efficiencies and savings, and the results will be back to us in roughly 120 days, that gives us almost half a budget year to realize some of those savings. We also are fairly confident that, having privatized the Building Inspection Department, that there will be significant savings there from what was budgeted. Therefore, I am going to move to amend this resolution, and strike the final paragraph where it says "be finally resolved," and substitute, be it further resolved, that the cost of these consulting services be absorbed by the departments being evaluated, and be it finally resolved, that City Council may amend the general fund budget to pay remainder or general expenses not paid by the departments after delivery of the final report from the consultant.
Support.
Thank you. I do that because, oh, you want to do your...
Move by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we amend the resolution to remove the final paragraph of the resolution, and substitute with the paragraph that Councilwoman Beltramini read, two paragraphs, and I think that we should all get that in writing, too, all of us. Discussion of the amendment. Councilwoman Beltramini?
It is my thought that, and you noticed that the first time I read through my agenda, I was like, well, you know, the money from capital has to come as a loan for me to support this. If we earmark that money as a loan, we cannot use it anytime soon for our roads that are falling apart. And I believe that we are in no position to take money from roads for anything. If our staff that always estimates expenses high and revenues low is as accurate as they usually are, there will be savings to cover this, primarily in this year's budget. We can make a decision later if we have to amend other points, but I think it all needs to be general fund dollars, and none of it from capital, and this will accomplish that.
And when we had our study session on this item, we discussed doing, discussed the different options that were available. So, if other council members would like to speak to the amendment of whether they feel that's the direction to go, or whatever they'd like to say. Councilwoman McGinnis?
Madam Mayor, I'm sure you probably would be able to tell from my line of questioning that was sent out earlier, that I had similar concerns, and I fully support the amendment as it's been stated by Councilwoman Beltramini. I think that it's important for us to do that. This is going to be benefiting quite a few departments. I think that the savings are going to be big enough to pay for the services that we'll be receiving, but I just didn't feel comfortable making a very specific decision about taking money from one very specific project that we think that we've come in under budget, or we have come in under budget, and officially move it around without looking at the big picture. And you know, I'm always harping on the big picture, but I would feel much more comfortable doing it the way that's been proposed by Councilwoman Beltramini, so I will be voting in support of that amended resolution.
Further discussion of the amendment? Okay, Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote on the amendment?
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Amendment passes on the, excuse me, on the main resolution? Any discussion? Councilman Howard?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, did we have a RFP that went out on this?
No.
Okay. Another question, well, that's fine. The other question I have is, what is, do we have a cost-benefit payback analysis?
I don't have one at this time. I can just make an assumption, which I hope is correct, that if the recommendations that ICMA makes are implemented, the one-time costs of their not-to-exceed amount will be recaptured sometime during fiscal year 11-12.
I hope you're right, and it is your intention then to liaise with City Council to implement the suggestions, is that correct?
Oh, absolutely. As a matter of fact, I'm just a pass-through at this point, and the final draft would need to be approved by the governing body.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on the main menu? I mean, main motion? Main menu.
Menu does sound nice.
That's right. Must be time to have a snack. Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote then on the main?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
No.
Motion passes. On the consent agenda, any items that folks want to have removed? Seeing then, could we have a resolution for approval of all the consent items?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Resolve that Detroit City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Move by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman Howard, that we approve all the agenda items as presented. Discussion? Yes, Mrs. Bartholomew?
There was an amendment to the minutes placed on the table.
Yes, including the amendment change. The vote then?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Memorandums and future agenda items, council referrals, council comments, I hope that tonight, I know a couple people want to bring a couple things up, but I know we have Planning Commission members waiting. I'll be real quick with mine. Again, yesterday, the six fire stations in the city of Troy had their open houses, which were all well-attended. Folks are always amazed and pleased, and so grateful for the service of our firefighters in Troy, which saves us nearly $14 million each and every year by having a volunteer fire department with the best equipment and training and service around. It is through their efforts that they were able to put out the electrical fire at the top of Troy building about a week ago. They had to evacuate the whole building, it was like on the 16th floor, but they've practiced. They get very few fires in those tall buildings, but they're ready for it. So, I commend each and every firefighter and their families for what they do for this community, and we are always grateful and appreciative of their skill. Some, I think Councilwoman Beltramini had some items she gave us.
I did. Madam Mayor, I brought to you, and you all knew it was coming, the, some of you have seen this before, the Michigan Municipal League Center for 21st Century Communities, which talks about the eight assets necessary for a community to be successful in today's world. And interestingly enough, Mary talked about the Vision 2020 Report, and those are very mirrored documents. Our citizens want a 21st century community, the league has resources to help us get there, and I brought that piece to you in preparation for our discussion next week, when we talk a little bit about visions and goals. The other piece is simply the Prosperity Agenda, which is the advocacy piece for Michigan Cities and Villages. So, those came from the conference, and I thought they would be helpful to us.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Kerwin?
From the conference as well, and I do agree, and again, this is all building towards next week, not only 2020 Troy Futures, 21C3, but also I wanted to share, we're familiar with MML's Race for the Cup. The state of Michigan is divided into regions, communities, if they choose, can share programs that have worked very well in their communities. Each region votes on one that, something that they believe they could implement. We had Harbor Beach, which looked at what they have as a local asset, and started a maritime festival, and they shared how they work with the private sector and the public sector to put together this maritime festival, which is now recognized nationally as one of the very best. Monroe, which had a blighted industrial site, recognized the history that was contained there. It is now the River Raysen Battlefield National Park, worked together with funding from the feds, and fundraising locally. Saginaw put together a simple recycling program that dramatically reduced landfill waste. Village of Kinsley, which is smaller than some of our schools, just 1,200, in the Village of Kinsley, they built a state-of-the-art $1.3 million library and municipal center. East Lansing talked about their Tech Innovation Center, which is an incubator for technology-based businesses, similar to our own automation alley right here. St. Ignace, very proud, again, recognized one of their local assets, which is travel, and built a beautiful new bus terminal, so that people can actually spend the night. Talked about putting Grandma on the bus, and having a nice place to spend the night right there in St. Ignace. And then Grand Haven, and I bring up Grand Haven because Grand Haven won, and they won for vivid and lively goals. Out of every one of these entries in the state, they won because they, this city council, developed a series of goals, which really addresses their core assets and where they want to go. And I brought copies of these, this is on the Grand Haven website, I have one for each of us and the city manager, but it revolves around infrastructure, fiscal health, and then a recognition of what they value, which is their natural assets. Additionally, they have some core principles that they also put right on this, no surprises, transparency, and communication. And they go through this process every single year, and we've been longing, or I have certainly been longing, and I know since the new council members have on, we have been goalless. And it's time that we do in fact look at the Troy Futures Vision, the 21C3, and some samples of models, as we prepare for our quick 90-minute meeting, which will be next Monday night.
Do you have copies for...
I do have copies for everyone, and I appreciate your indulgence on this, but I hope that we can match vivid and lively goals. The reason this was recognized is this is developed into a poster, simply, and placed in every one of their facilities, and so that everybody involved knows the council's direction for the city, and that would be very helpful for us. Thank you.
Any others? Mr. Zerling?
Just two quick points. I had mentioned earlier that should the Library Village pass, that Lori, John, Mark, and I would negotiate with the friends, we would actually negotiate with whatever individuals were authorized that comprised the Library Board. And secondly, ICMA is going to make independent recommendations, so, you know, if you don't like them, you just don't implement them.
Right.
Okay?
And I hate to correct you, Councilwoman Kerwin, we haven't been goalless, we just have our old goals, which we haven't updated yet, which we're going to do.
I'll call them ill-fitting goals, Madam Mayor, ill-fitting.
I hate to say that we're goalless. Okay, if there are no other items to come before us, we'll be in adjournment, and then we'll start a new meeting in the lower-level conference room with our planning commissioners, who have been here waiting since 8:30, I think.